And I kind of high-fived a few times during the meeting because people were talking about some issues and problems they have from other towns. And we kind of realized that as we were listening to other folks talking that certainly the town council and mayor's office take a very proactive approach to freedom of information. And I think the best way to say it is we consider the FOI app to be the bare minimum as far as communicating and open government. And many of our boards and commissions do a pretty good job. Some of them are, again, bare minimum and we need to do better than that. I think I could become the FOI czar, so you probably can all get sort of sick of hearing me. There were three, three kinds of ideas that came from it. And one is, one of the towns or somebody mentioned that they have on their website something called a reading room. And what it is, is a list of questions, not like an FAQ, but a list of questions that come up pretty often. And so maybe you have like 10 of them and it would be in this, just, you know, linked to the reading room. And for instance, I could think of the number one question would be, can I have chickens? We get that question over and over and over again. So, so that's just an idea we'll think about, maybe IT can, I'm always sending things over to IT, maybe IT can think about that. And we discussed, a couple of us tonight, the fact that maybe we ought to bring Tom Hennig back down. I'm not sure how often he's willing to come. I know we just had him last year. But you know, we have a lot of new members and of our boards and commissions. And you know, if you think about it, some of them probably don't even know that FOI governs the boards or commissions. And they really don't even know, know the rules. So I think if he is willing to come down, we ought to go ahead and plan, plan another session. And then lastly, the format, first of all, the format was fabulous. And they had a whole bunch of questions that people had submitted. And some of them were quite interesting, some of them we'd probably have ourselves. So what I did, and I'm sure Roxanne did as well, we took notes as far as all the questions. And I thought when we get to that portion of the meeting that is called, what do I call that, towards the end of the meeting?
Will you try to get us to stay longer?
Yes, we're trying to discuss work session issues as time permits. I think I might throw a question out there once the meeting, if we have time for it. I think it would be kind of interesting to hear. Now that being said, the very first question that came up, the panel of three lawyers, they could not come to an agreement on the very first question. So FOI is not black and white. It depends how, how you ask the question. In fact, I said something to John, to the mayor this afternoon, and I said, there's one thing I think we need to do a little differently because they said this. And John said, absolutely not, that's totally not what they told us the last time. So you have to kind of take it and massage it now. The other thing is, is there's a book that has been written on freedom of information by a lawyer in Connecticut. And I may get that and I'll really become a nuisance to all of you. So that is my report.
Reading homework.
Reading homework. You got it.
Book reports.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the 25th and 26th.
Second.
Motion's being made in second. Roxanne, which call the wall.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Borey?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Remrowski?
Yes.
Aiden, here was a rain post.
Motion carries. You have your communication list, you have your referral list, subcommittee reports, admin.
Administration met earlier this evening and we went over a few different issues. One issue that we're looking at is a resolution regarding the assumption of liability for the use of town facilities by certain organizations or groups. The administration committee has been tasked to draft a resolution clarifying the town's policy on the use of facilities. So we started the discussion on that. Another issue that we're looking at, at our last council meeting, Ms. Stefan, during citizen comments, talked about roaming in nuisance dogs. And you recall I had asked that the chair sent that over to admin. We are looking at that. I requested that the town's animal control officer be at our next meeting, so we're going to be looking at that pretty closely on our May 14 meeting. And we also moved forward an appointment that we'll look at a little bit later.
Thank you. Any questions for admin? Finance?
In addition to the items that are in the agenda, the finance committee met on a regular meeting last week, also had a special meeting tonight to discuss the budget, will be discussed later tonight in the agenda. But in addition to that, we, based on a letter received from Superintendent Patterson concerning asbestos removal in the schools, we have a consent agreement that has to be looked at for non-personnel space that we've taken over the last five years. The board has managed the process of removing the asbestos tiles, ceiling tiles, et cetera, from all the places that personnel, students and teachers and others are normal traffic. But there are still areas within the school, primarily the infrastructure, boiler rooms and things like this. And so we still have an outstanding action and the process essentially was coming to the finance committee to see if there is revenue to do that. If not, then putting out a revised schedule for agreement by the state. And that's where we are. The action was for Mr. Kilpatrick to come back in our next meeting with some additional information that we require in order to pursue forward.
Any questions for finance? Information technology, Mr. Stones?
Mr. Demrowski, sorry. IT met last week. Most of the stuff is just updates from the MIS director as far as how she's progressing, if the department is progressing with updating people forms for various things. MIS, or correction, Munis for the online payments and timekeeping and things like that. Also in discussion with the PMBC and the police as far as what technology is required in the police station. And there's some other issues about budget items that came up recently as well. It's all my report. If I may ask any questions.
Any questions for IT? Land use planning public works.
Land use planning public works also met last week. We had a comment from a resident, just asking that when we review Rowan Ordinance 45, to make sure we maintain a consistent policy and to bring back basically the checklist to verify that all the documentation is required by Ordinance 45 is in fact in hand by the town. Since there have been several roads recently that have been accepted into the town inventory that certain documentation was not provided. Mr. Terry from planning zoning advised the committee about a couple of updates from public acts regarding purity bonds and how they're upgrading, working for updating zoning regulations. From a WPCA standpoint, we're also informed that they're looking at their rate structures. Apparently the rate structure that WPCA can charge $550 per year for hydrant to the town that they have not been collecting in the review and that rate structure would be something more reasonable. We also had reports that we have seen the new bicycle signs that are up, so that was good. And also the issue question of risk grows up about several lots over by corner land town in Crown Village, whether or not they were considered to be light or zoning violations. So the mayor and light enforcement officer and zoning have all been notified and are aware of the situation and trying to work through that. Councilor Allen had spoke to a developer who's working down in East Line about who might be interested in using the Clark farm for a solar panel farm. So taking a come approach to talk, to talk to us more about that. And then we also move forward with a resolution that's on tonight's agenda later on. And also there was a discussion about maybe adding public water at some point to Center Drive since most of the homes on there do not have septic systems, they have seps pools, many of them have failed in the last recent years. So it might be an idea to keep this road on the, on the list or depends on if we do any future water expansion to add them into that because there may be some type of liabilities for water in that area. And that's my report.
Any questions for managers? Okay, liaison reports, WPCA.
WPCA has not met since the last town council.
Permanent municipal building committee.
The municipal committee met on Monday. They gave an update on the final phase of the Alge- Heights Water Project, which is the pump station. This line of cars will pour, they're still on track to be complete by the end of May. The next discussion was the police facility. There had been discussion for the last couple of building committee meetings concerning the requirement to have sprinkler fire suppression in the building. The town fire marshal has come to agreement with developer, with the architect, that there is no requirement for that, that was brought forward. The mayor has continued to work with neighboring properties to make sure they're aware of all the activity that will be going on, as well as the discussion on additional land that has been in discussion at the back end of the property for that effort. The architect was at the planning and zoning meeting, presented preliminary set of drawings, went through a preliminary review, discussed many of the areas on that. The plan that they've presented, the building committee is to be back in planning and zoning on the, on the attempt to be law. And then potentially, if that was the case, it would be a decision on 24th, but that is a planning and zoning, they're working through that process. There was general discussion about the power distribution on the land as it moved, right away through the center of the property now, moving at the edge. In addition, the demolition contract for the three buildings, the firehouse, ambulance building, the outbuilding here has been signed by the mayor. There is a 10-day wait required for payment of notification. So demolition would start tomorrow, about 21st of April. Completion date somewhere at the end of April, beginning of May for those three buildings. And finally, as the mayor made a request to make sure that our town building inspector and fire marshal have at least two weeks to review the final drawings, a waiting for review. The communications plan, Lieutenant Finkelstein was working with the communications vendor to identify the issues related to the communications in the building, as well as where the radio tower is going to fit. And with the, there's some general discussion on fall radius for that. And finally, they had a meeting, interior coordination meeting, dealing with the general, what types of materials will we wear within the building? And there was this general agreement from Lieutenant Finkelstein on what was presented. The final issue that was discussed was our Board of Education facilities project related to schools. And just around a consensus memo was presented by the board of ed to the building committee, general discussion. And the outcome of that was that it was suggested the board of ed need to come to the town council, which I anticipate they will in a couple of weeks, in the next number two weeks, to preserve that and have a little discussion.
Any questions for Board of Ed? No. Did I skip Board of Ed?
Yes, you did.
Yeah. We'll come back to that.
Any questions for permanent municipal building committee? Okay, now the best for that.
Yes, yes. See, that is a may. During the report of the superintendent of schools, there was a discussion regarding the 2014 and 15 calendar, which was passed at the previous meeting. But they also needed at that time to get memoranda of agreement from the secretarial and custodial bargaining units due to the fact that a couple of days in the school calendar next year have traditionally been not, and I believe it was specifically mentioned as such in the contracts. That's been received. Facility committee reported that an Eagle Scout project was presented and the naming of Robert J. Donovan Way should be decided upon at the next meeting. Also, a new softball shed is being built and a short and long-term capital needs plan is being worked on. Finance committee indicated that the $46,000 are recategorized, whoops, recategorized by the town council, doubles email available to the board of ed through June, and they're appreciative of that. They recognize the need to formalize grant application processes and the follow-ups required. A new communications plan is being worked on by that committee, and this year's leap dinner is scheduled for May 22nd. Cape workshops on such things as education funding are scheduled for May 13th. In addition to continuing to monitor this year's budget, the business manager indicated, spoke about the substantial contributions to our community by the Leger Roadery Club. These were articulated with appreciation. BOE received, I don't know, a few dozen letters from fourth graders about the health and wellbeing, so it was an unusual communications and correspondence, but they enjoyed reading those. Under new business, there is a pro forma need to basically non-renew certain employees each year. These are, I believe, predominantly long-term and temporary substitutes. This is in accordance with the Connecticut statutes. It's entirely unrelated to any dissatisfaction with performance, as they said, it's pro forma. The girls hockey team, we have approved a girls' field hockey cooperative with Fitch High School. It involves no expense to the town and it's expected that approximately five girls from Leger will join the program. Noted that the LHS math team placed seventh in class M for the state, excellent performance. Two of our students placed in the top 50 of the entire state and will represent Connecticut at the next level of competition in Pennsylvania. Personal, an advanced personal finance course has been adopted for LHS. They noted that the state supports each new personal finance course with grants of up to $25,000. The course has been selected by 170 students, which they indicate means that about 100 students will be turned away due to staffing issues if the new course is passed unanimously. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Thanks.
Yes.
On the Robert J. Donovan Way, I received two letters of support from classes, LHS class school all the way back to the mid-'70s, and I provided those to Kathy Patterson. And I don't think that'll be a problem at all. I hope it does get named that way. The second thing is with the number of students that have been unfortunately turned down for the advanced finance class, is this a good opportunity for the board of ed to look at some of the other elective classes that we have that, I believe when we had the presentation with Amanda Fagan not too long ago, there were some that had eight, 10, 11 kids. This looks like a class that is under serious consideration from a lot of students and hopefully we'll have an opportunity to fill those slots.
Yeah, I can't answer your question whether or not this is a good opportunity, but I believe it's an annual consideration of which courses go forward based on enrollment. There's no point in continuing courses that are under-enrolled, except in situations where you have, for example, let's say French III were under-enrolled. To eliminate it makes French IV the next year nonexistent because there'd be nobody to take it. So there are a variety of wrinkles in that regard, but I'm sure they'll, they'll take what you said to heart there.
Any other questions? Report of the mayor.
Hey, thank you. I'd like to add to the comments that were made about the Leger High School 5K race. That was a major success and my thanks to the many town and school staff who volunteered to help with that event. I hope this becomes an annual event because it definitely attracts people from all over the state to our community. State Senator Kathy Austin contacted me regarding her attempts to get funding for a Long Pond Dam hydrological and hydraulic study and an emergency operations plan. It is a state requirement that studies, these studies be completed periodically. And this is an issue that several state officials, beginning with Representative Tom Reynolds, has been working on with local officials and local and town residents for several years. Senator Austin has been in touch with DEEP, DEEP officials, and I actually met with them at one point also. And they've indicated that they would not oppose this grant. By way of full disclosure, I live on Long Pond, a member of the Lantern Hill Valley Association. That's one of the owners of the dam. But this process began long before my ownership was even a dream and membership in the, in the association. I'm bringing this to the council's attention because this grant, which is approximately $15,000, which is a, a very, very good price to get any of, to get that type of a study done. The individuals who have been looking at this have gotten prices several times that amount. But this grant would require upfront, upfront payment by the town prior to reimbursement. So, you know, that's one that we need to look at and talk about in terms of grants and how we go about that. The importance of this study was clearly brought to light in March of 2010 when we had the failure of Lantern Hill Road and the bridge over Route 184. That severely impacted local transportation. And so it's a case where it's not just, you know, the dam. People on Long Pond would survive very nicely, not very happily, but very nicely if the dam let loose, but the people downstream, not so much. So again, I bring that to the notice of the council and often talking with finance about that. An update on the ACO facility. The state ACO was to visit the town on March 28th, which was the week that the council had done their field walk there. He did not come to town, and so obviously we did not meet. But we have contacted his office to arrange a future meeting, and I'll keep the council informed. I know this is on the council's agenda tonight for approval of this. I'm not telling you not to approve it, but I do not intend to proceed with any of these repairs and upgrades until you do have that meeting. And I think the council shares that, that feeling. I hope that you. I also note that the authorization for me to sign the water operations and administration contract with Bright Utilities is on this evening's agenda. Many of us realize and remember that this has been many, many years in the working. And it has become what I think is a model of common sense regionalization. I strongly support this contract. I look forward to signing this agreement. It's, it's a significant example of the type of regional cooperation that Leger really needs to aggressively pursue if we're going to remain competitive in our region. Thank you.
Any questions for the mayor?
I have one which could probably just as well come under the next, next item of boldness, but regarding the, the visit from the ACO, am I understanding correctly tonight, but really are we voting on a particular project or just the funding at this point? So in other words, if, if ACO were to visit and say, we really need to do this, this and this, would anything be negatively affected by having voted for just the amount this evening?
Well, that's, that's the confusing part. To date, we have not received state ACO's report. We have earlier reports, the previous one was about four years ago. I think the concern that I have, and I think some of the councils share that, is we're doing this on a verbal, kind of a verbal acknowledgement, but the concern is that we do these modifications, some of which are, you know, make sense and probably are necessary, without knowing the full impact of what may need to be done. And so I think we feel by sitting down and talking with, with the official, we get a better idea both short, short term and long term, because I think knowing what that total cost will be will help us in the decisions we make.
Any other questions for the mayor? Mayor, I would just like to mention that during the finance committee meetings, your social services board and Kate, we asked them a lot of questions, and I just would like to commend them on how quickly they got back to us with answers. I will send a letter stating that, but they were, they sent us everything we asked for and did a and did a really nice job, so we really do appreciate that. Okay, old business. Would anybody like to make a motion to remove that item from the table?
No people ready.
Okay, we'll move on to then item number three. Who would like to make that?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, motion to authorize the mayor's...
Yes, you will?
I move to authorize the mayor to execute a water operations contract with Rotten Utilities to commence on June 1, 2014, and expire on June 30, 2016, including option B for customer service and billing to commence upon the execution of the contract and to expire June 30, 2015 with a one-year option. In addition, grant a bid waiver to Rotten Utilities for the contract. Second.
Further discussion?
I think we've discussed and discussed, yes.
I'm going to vote against this because even though there are many solid reasons to grant the bid waiver, as they have, we are still a bit informative to see comparisons with other companies. Just based on that, I intend to vote out.
Yes.
I can respond to that. There was a great deal of discussion about whether we are operating under the RFP that was distributed in 2010 and whether a bid waiver is necessary. It's my belief and my recommendations that we are currently within the five-year period of the original RFP. The original RFP had a three-year agreement followed by two one-year agreements. What actually happened was we did a number of extensions, and now we're getting, we kind of reversed it. We're getting to the long-term agreement at the end instead of at the beginning. To make sure that we're within the five-year period, we changed from a three-year long-term to a two-year long-term, but we still put the bid waiver in there just to absolve any lingering doubts about whether we should respond to requests to put this out to RFP even though we believe we're still within the RFP period.
Any further questions? Hearing none, Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Cebory?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Songz?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Novrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Seven in favor, one opposed. Motion carries. Would anyone like to amend the agenda, Mr. Eichelberg?
I would like to amend the agenda to add the motion to, amend the agenda to add the following. Motion to appoint Mr. Timothy Norris, unaffiliated of 27 Friar Tuck Drive, Galesbury, as a town representative to the Southeastern Connecticut Water Authority Squad for a two-year term ending August 31, 2015, filling a vacancy left by Mr. Cameron.
Second.
Is there a second? At this time, we're just moving to amend the agenda. Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mr. Cebory?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Songz?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Novrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Crebs?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries, and that will show up under the admin committee business. There's a consent calendar. Would anybody like to remove any items on the consent calendar? Hearing none, Roxanne, would you call the roll?
I move the consent calendar. Second.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Songz?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Novrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Cebory?
Yes.
The payers are opposed. Motion carries. Admin.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Timothy Norris, unaffiliated of 27 Friar Tuck Drive, Galesbury, as a town representative to the Southeastern Connecticut Water Authority Squad for a two-year term ending August 31, 2015, filling a vacancy left by Mr. Cameron.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Again, it's always happy to see people step up and continue to keep our boards and clinicians filled. Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mr. Songz?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Novrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries. Okay, lots of things for finance.
I think a motion authorized Galesbury Fire Company to overexpend account 1012-0551-51130 over time by $1,500. In addition, approve interdepartmental transfer in the amount of $1,500 from account number 1011-4303-53610, planning commission legal to account number 1012-0551-51130 over time.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
Just some background, it's covered in the backup here. Essentially, due to callouts by the Galesbury Fire Company, they've looked at overexpending the overtime budget. So per ordinance, they need to come in and request permission to exceed their budget before, that's what this is for.
Any questions? Yes.
I'd just like to thank Chief Secome because at each time we have an issue or there's a need, he's, he always comes to the finance meetings, he's always there to answer questions, and he's here tonight. I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Novrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Songz?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries. Item number five.
Make a motion, motion to reclassify Board of Education boiler repairs totaling $46,314 as follows. From account 2112-600-54300, repair and maintenance in the amount of $13,362 to account 2107-0101-58250, Board of Ed Capital Reserve. From account 2112-600-57310, replacement equipment in the amount of $11,923 to account 2107-0101-58250, Board of Ed Capital Reserve. And from account 2112-600-57300, new equipment in the amount of $21,029 to account 2107-0101-58250, Board of Ed Capital Reserve.
Second.
Discussion?
Background, as the Board of Ed had come to the Finance Committee approximately two months ago to request additional revenue that had been brought in based on increase in the agri-science student population. The way that that works, the revenue is not grant. Expenses are what's approved by the residents of town at budget referendum as well as by the council for expenditures. So during that discussion, we had been notified that there were a number of significant repairs to boilers within schools that they had to take out of operative expenses. And so out of that discussion came this motion. One thing that I will note is that that discussion was centered on what was told as three boiler repairs at Ledyard Center School. What came as a motion, however, was boiler repair at the high school, another boiler repair at the middle school, and the replacement of a freezer door and a refrigerator door at the high school. We had a long discussion with the Board of Ed representatives that were there and superintendent. This was not what we thought was coming to us, but we, in the spirit of the discussion that we had, we passed this law. However, in the future, we need to make sure that where truly capital expenses and not maintenance are what's brought forward, we spend out of capital caps.
Any discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Novrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Cebory?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Songz?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries. Item number six.
Make a motion authorize payment of $1,250 from salary benefits adjustment account number 1011-0253-53400 to fund a 401A pension contribution to the Administrator of Human Resources.
Second.
Discussion?
The, essentially, the, our Administrator of Human Resources was hired, and there was no account line-up set up for the matching fund for his retirement contribution. In review of his contract in terms of employment, this was the portion that was paid for by the general government, so this is coming forward rectifying a contract agreement.
Any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mr. Novrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Cebory?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Songz?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed. Item number seven.
Make a motion to adopt a fiscal year 2014-2015 budget in the amount of $53,301,926, the prize of a general government budget of $22,577,64, and a Board of Education budget of $30,724,862.
Second.
Probably nothing left to say, right?
It, it, there have been significant discussion on this. The Board of Ed had presented their budget in the end of February as a chart. That had been brought forward. There was a meeting between the Board of Ed and the council, and there was a general discussion about that budget, question and answers. On the general government side, the mayor presented the budget to the council. We held three meetings over three weeks, so we had about 18 hours worth of time seen out with each department head to go through that budget. Following that time, the Finance Committee met and looked over the budget. Live by live, we saw a significant increase in the budget, and from my perspective as the chair, what I saw as, because of that increase, that all discretionary account increases should not be, should be zero. So my initial look was to go through the budget and reduce all the increases back to what they were in past year. In addition to that, we took the extra step of actually going back over the last two or three years of actual expenditures to look at individual lineups to see whether departments had fully expended the amount of money that they had been given in the past years for execution. And through that effort, and along with view by my fellow members on the committee, we came up with a number for reduction of the general government budget. As agreement has been over the last several years with Mayor Allico, he has requested any reductions we sent back to him so he could review them and propose alternatives to what the number, to get to the same number, which he did and presented back to the council. Approximately $135,000 was reduced on the general government side through that exercise, and that is how we arrived to numbers we have today.
Questions?
Not a question, just a comment. As a rookie counselor, I try to make it a point and learn what I can as quickly as I can about the way things work on the council. And to that end, I attended a number of Finance Committee meetings, and I just want to thank the committee for the seriousness and purpose. I know the amount of work that goes into making up a budget from my limited experience with it, but I saw people really trying to do what was best for the town in the most economical way possible. I also want to thank the Board of Ed for the degree to which they agreed to educate the council on the specifics of their spending and their budget and handle any questions that we had for them, so I appreciate it on both ends.
I'd just like to say I am not particularly comfortable with this budget, but I intend to vote for it because ultimately it is the option of the townspeople to approve or disapprove it, so I think we have a responsibility to send it to them.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Just one quick thing. I'd like to thank Councilman France for providing so much backup documentation to Councilor Songz and I in the form of self-spread sheets, which made it very, not easy, I wouldn't say easy, it made it easier for us to review the different years expenditures and come to where we are on the general government side. Thank you.
Yes.
I'm going to echo Steve's comment. There's a few things in there I'm not totally comfortable with, but it's up to the townspeople ultimately. So the votes in the form as well.
Any other discussion? Yes.
I'm going to say what I always say. When we put something forward to the townspeople, I like to recommend that they vote for it based on due diligence and the work put in by all the councils, all the people in the Board of Ed, and by the mayor and his staff. A lot of work went into this budget. We worked very hard, me being everyone, worked very hard to reduce this budget. I'm not happy with it either. I wish it were zero again. It's not. It's a significant increase, but I want to say to the taxpayers that we have all worked very hard to make this a reasonable increase. It's what we think we have to do, not what we can afford. It's what we think we have to do.
And I will certainly agree that both Finance Committees have worked very hard on this.
Any further comment? Mr. France, this budget represents how many mill increase?
Approximately 2.25 mill, which is about 98%, 98% increase.
So I'm going to vote to send this to public hearing. I probably wouldn't vote to send this to the taxpayers, but that's a decision we'll have to make, and we all have to make. I'm not, I don't think a two-and-a-quarter mill increase is a reasonable budget. In addition, there are still some questions outstanding from the Board of Education that were asked at the Board of Education's public hearing several months ago, and with Mr. Francis' help, I would like to send a letter just to make sure they understand what those questions are, so we could get some answers to those, because again, it's kind of hard to make a decision on their portion of the budget until we have all the answers to the questions that were asked.
Yes.
And one final, I share Councilor Davis's concern over the budget. I do think two-and-a-quarter mill is a significant increase. However, and it's more than pro forma, but you have to have a budget passed where to go to public hearing. So the vote tonight is essentially to get to public hearing and take public comment. It is not the final vote of the budget. There will be another vote following the public hearing to take it to the town meeting. So my yes vote is to take it to public hearing and start listening to what the public has to say about this significant increase in the budget.
Thank you for that clarification. Zero.
Any other questions or comments? Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Cebory?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Songz?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Novrowski?
No.
Okay, so that's seven in favor, one opposed. The motion carries. Item number eight.
Make a motion to adopt a proposed water operations fiscal year 2014-2015 budget in the amount of $871,000 as presented and drafted in March 24, 2014.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, the WPCA has met, reviewed the water operations budget for the coming year. They've gone over it back and forth several times, that made some changes. They did an in-depth analysis of water usage, and for anyone who is scrutinizing the budget, they will see that we are actually proposing or projecting to use less water on the Route 117 system. That is another year and another indication that water conservation measures are working, in my opinion, but I think they've done a good job with this. The water operations budget is in much better shape than it's been in years past, and we have continued to encourage the WPCA to make progress towards setting aside money for future investments.
Any discussion? Yes.
I've said this before, from my limited time on WPCA, before we started the new WPCA, I just want to say, job well done. We have, we are light years ahead of where we were, so I am so thankful for that.
Any other discussion? Yes.
That's why I added comments. Everybody understands it wasn't just a one meeting with the Finance Committee that come forward. There was representatives from WPCA who came to finance three or four times to discuss the budget as presented, and also answer questions revolving how they came to it. It went through several iterations through several WPCA meetings before we came to the final budget approval that they proposed.
Any other discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Cebory?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Songz?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Novrowski?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries. Item number nine.
Make a motion to hold a public hearing on April 21, 2014 at 7:00 p.m. to be held at the Ledyard High School Auditorium to receive comments and recommendations regarding the proposed fiscal year 2014-2015 budget.
Second.
This is just a motion to hold the public hearing. Any questions? Discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mr. Cebory?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Songz?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nembrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Cebory?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Songz?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nembrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Cebory?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Songz?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nembrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Cebory?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Songz?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nembrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Cebory?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Songz?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nembrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Cebory?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Songz?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nembrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Cebory?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Cebory?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries, item number nine.
Make a motion to hold the annual town meeting regarding the proposed fiscal year 2014-2015 budget on May 19, 2014, at 7:00 PM at the Ledger High School Auditorium, and to adjourn to a referendum to be held on May 20, 2014, between the hours of 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM. In addition, should the referendum fail, the subsequent referendum will be held between the hours of 12:00 PM and 8:00 PM in accordance with Chapter 7 and Section 6 of the Town Charter.
Second. Any discussion?
Chairman, I had a question about the time.
I was just going to ask the same question.
And I'm not sure if it's in the chart, but I know it was at Roxanne's. It was at 7:30. I don't know if that's mandated, but it's a, you're setting it.
So you're setting it.
Of course.